Thank you, your worship. Item one, our bylaw numbers forty-two fourteen and forty-two fifteen, twenty-eleven, text amendments to C four city center commercial zone density provisions.
Good evening, your worship and council members. These city-initiated OCP bylaw and zoning bylaw text amendments address the density bonus system for the C four city center commercial zone. Specifically, the proposed zoning bylaw text amendment would retain the existing base or allowable floor area of two-point-five times a lot area in the C four zone, provide up to a maximum floor area of five-point-zero times a lot area for sites using the C four zone, establish an incremental density bonus system for developments building between two-point-five and a maximum five-point-zero floor area ratio, and the density bonus system would require a financial contribution for specified percent of land value attributable to the additional density. This financial contribution would be set aside for community amenities as identified in the city center area plan. The OCP bylaw amendment would amend the city center area plan policy, CC three, city center commercial density bonus, to outline the specific amenity items for which density bonus funds can be collected, including transit-oriented infrastructure and street enhancements, community facilities such as parks, plazas, and public art, and affordable housing. The policy would also provide for an increase in the maximum floor area of five-point-zero for assisted living, community care, or congregate housing on a lot-specific basis. In such cases, council could consider a site-specific zoning bylaw amendment under the C four zone. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaws forty-two fourteen and forty-two fifteen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have one registered speaker on the agenda tonight, Sandy Burpee. Please come forward. Nine-eight-five Corona Crescent, Coquitlam. I'll do that for you. Mr. Burpee.
Good evening. I'm comforted by the fact that it's only a game. I know what I'm referring to. I'm sure, your worship, councillors, I'm here this evening to express the support of the Tri-City Homelessness Task Group for the expansion of the density bonus provisions in the C four city center commercial zone, but to express her disappointment that there is no specific allocation of the proceeds of the density bonus to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund in bylaw four-two-one-four. To date, there has been a council policy, although I gather unwritten, that fifty percent of the proceeds of the C four zone density bonus would go to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund and fifty percent to other community amenities. However, in bylaw forty-two fourteen, affordable housing is included as just one of the possible amenities, and in fact, it's actually at the end of the list of the suggested amenities. The need for the creation of affordable housing in Coquitlam and Metro Vancouver has not diminished over time, and when I talk about affordable housing and talk about subsidized, non-market housing, supportive housing, and low-end-of-market rentals, and I'd encourage you to allocate in bylaw forty-two fourteen a fixed proportion of proceeds to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, ideally fifty percent. I've got some information this evening that I think you will find interesting, which demonstrates the continuing growing need for affordable housing in the, in Coquitlam. Carter, next slide, please, Carter.
Would you prefer to do it, or?
Thank you. First of all, the good news, homelessness, as measured by the twenty-four-hour count on March sixteenth, is down fifty percent over two thousand and eight. However, this was not reflected in our neighboring municipalities. In Burnaby, homelessness was down fifteen percent for a total of eighty-six persons. In New West, no change at all, still one-twenty-four, and in fact, in Maple Ridge, it's gone up by thirteen percent for a total of a hundred and two. Next slide, please. The situation in Metro Vancouver, I'm sure you heard about it in the media, that the good news was that there has been no increase of homelessness over two thousand and eight, in fact, a very modest reduction, which is probably accounted for by the accuracy of a twenty-four-hour account, but the really significant change is the decrease in street homelessness with a corresponding increase in sheltered homelessness. You can see the yellow line there, which is the no change in sheltered spaces from two thousand eight, or five to two thousand and eight. Over the last three years, you're probably aware, there's been a considerable expansion of shelter spaces in downtown Vancouver, temporary shelter spaces by and large, mats on the floor, although they are twenty-four-hour operations. It begs the question, though, where's the housing we need to get persons out of emergency shelters? Next slide, please. This is a graph of the demand, the number of client households which come to the Sheris Coquitlam Food Bank depot, which is a Comal Lake United Church, and the blue dots there show the number of clients that we've had since the day we opened on nineteenth of May two thousand and four, in this case, up to June two thousand and nine. Because the, that is a bit random, the red line represents a four-week moving window to average out the peaks and the valleys, and you can see that they're typically, the demand up until the fall of two thousand and eight varied between sixty and eighty households per week. Now, a client household can only come every two weeks, so you can really multiply these figures by two to get a greater sense of the demand in Coquitlam. And in fact, this isn't all the people in Coquitlam going to the food bank. I imagine a number of them in Cotton would probably go to the Port Moody Food Bank as well, because they can take the ninety-nine bus along Clark. Next slide, please. So unfortunately, I couldn't get the two charts on the same graph, but you'll notice now, this is the period from June two thousand and nine through this past May, and instead of the average weekly demand being between sixty and eighty, it's now between a hundred and a hundred and twenty, and in fact, last Wednesday, we had a hundred and thirty households attend the food bank. Next slide, please. This shows the, as you're probably aware, B.C. Housing maintains a waitlist, which is called the Housing Registry, and this is a waitlist for affordable housing, and this particular graph shows the increase in the demand by persons currently living in Coquitlam for affordable housing. These are persons on the waitlist, and as you can see, it's gone up each year since two thousand and nine. Next slide, please. This, similar, this shows all the persons on the waitlist who would like to live in Coquitlam, and you can see the same changes reflected there, an increase, standard increase from two thousand and nine through two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven. Next slide, please. This graph, I'm sure you're familiar with, I copied it directly from the Affordable Housing Strategy Implementation Progress Report that was submitted to the Land Use and Economic Development Committee today, but I wanted to repeat it because I thought it showed so well what the issue is here. And in this particular chart, thirty-two percent is considered to be the limit of gross household income, which is, can affordably be spent on owning a house or providing shelter. And so you can see someone who's a service worker, or even an office worker, is going to be sorely stretched to acquire even a condo apartment, but you can also use this bar chart as well to look at the gap for renters as well, and if, typically thirty percent is considered to be the outward limit of affordability for rental housing, and if you consider the service worker twenty-five thousand dollars a year, it works out to affordable rent of six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month, which doesn't buy very much these days, in the way of rental facilities. Next slide, please. Core housing need, the last data we have is two thousand and six, since it's presumably to be more data available next year, but eleven percent of owned households in Coquitlam core housing need in two thousand and six. Could you go back, please? Thank you. And thirty-one percent of renter households in two thousand and six were in core housing need, and core housing need means that the housing is, might not be adequate in terms of size, space, it might be substandard in terms of standard of repair and also safety, or it would cost more than thirty percent to find something that did meet those standards alternatively in the community. Next slide, please. And finally, this is, this shows the relationship between rental accommodation, apartment accommodations, and the annual salaries that are required to, for it to be considered affordable. As you can see, to rent a bachelor apartment now requires about, a salary of about thirty-two thousand dollars in one bedroom, and so on goes correspondingly upwards. At the sod-turning for Comal Lake Gardens, Minister Coleman acknowledged the City of Coquitlam as a leader in supporting the creation of shelter and supportive housing facilities in the province, and said the city had established a standard for other municipalities to follow. And I'm encouraging and urging you to maintain that momentum. The task group would, I'd like you to allocate fifty percent of density bonus provisions from the C four zone to the Affordable Housing Reserve Fund, and expand the use of density bonusing to other neighborhoods in Coquitlam. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any further speakers? Seeing none? Or is any more written documentation seeing none? I declare this item closed.
Item two, bylaw number forty-two eleven, twenty-eleven, for three-oh-seven Begin Street.
Go ahead, you have five minutes.
This site is located on the southeast corner of Begin and Carche Avenue. The site and sites to the north, south, and east are designated Low Density Apartment Residential. The area to the west is designated One Family Residential. Zoning on the site is RM one, Low Density Apartment Residential. To the east, south, and west is RS one, One Family Residential, and to the north is C one, Local Commercial Site. The site currently has a single-family dwelling, built in nineteen-ten, known as the Paray Residence. The dwelling is considered one of the earliest and most significant surviving residences in Myardville, according to the Heritage Conservation Plan prepared by Donald Luxton and Associates. The proposed Heritage Revitalization Agreement bylaw would restore the Paray Residence to reflect its original appearance and place a heritage designation on the building, and to permit the development of six additional residences on the site. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number forty-two eleven. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers to this item? I don't have a speaker's list, so if there are any speakers to this item, at three-oh-seven Begin. Please step forward.
Your worship, councillors, just off the bat, I want to apologize, I'm kind of under the weather, so if my voice gives out, I do apologize. My name's Harwinder Palmer, I'm from Harwerman Development, where the developer on-site for this project. I just wanted to come up and just kind of give you guys a heads-up again from our last meeting. We started this project about eight months ago, working with city staff. My architect, Ian Guan from Graduate Architecture, went through many revisions on what we could do to make this lot work. He originally started with Don Luxton's group, and we determined that this house was of significant heritage value, like Erica was mentioning. From there, we took ideas that we could use from the heritage house to incorporate in the rest of development. However, we didn't want to take every element, because we wanted the house to be unique on its own as well, too, and not just be enveloped with the rest of development. So we took ideas as in the windows, the dorm, the shed dormers, and incorporated into the new development. Secondly, we're moving the building to closer towards the intersection, again, just to highlight its significance and keep it separated from the rest of the development. This was done for two reasons. One, to again, keep it significant, second is to give us a driveway access down the middle, otherwise, there was no other way to really put a drive aisle that fit needs onto this property. The second reason was the slope of this lot is quite significant. That worked in our favor as well, too, because it keeps building B low, and it doesn't overstretch above building A or keep anything like that, so building A still looks significant, which was north side of the property. That's basically what I just want to mention to you guys, that we did do a lot of work with city staff about this project, I think we covered all of our aspects with the Myardville Plan and the heritage significance of the property, and we hope to have a discussed project with you guys.
Thank you. Just one quick question, when you refer to building A, you're referring to the heritage house?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. councillor Reed has a question. But it's not for you, I don't think.
No, it's not, it's for staff. Some of the letters of concern we've got here are with respect to insufficient street parking available, and this is showing me that we have twelve spaces on-site for that particular development, but one of the letters comes from eleven-thirty-five Carche. Is that the neighbor on Carche? And they're saying that there's already insufficient parking, and I'm wondering, and they're saying that it will create parking conflicts. I'm wondering what kind of parking they have in that development. This goes back to the age-old thing, if you're going to build townhouses, you need to have sufficient parking on-site. So they're telling me that they're all using the street parking, and there's no street parking left for anyone else. So can I find out what's happening at eleven-thirty-five, please? Do you have an answer to that?
Mr. Stephen.
Through your worship, councillor Reed, eleven-thirty-five is located directly north of the project along Carche.
Yeah.
I believe it's a duplex. In terms of the parking, I don't have the information at hand in terms of knowing exactly what type of parking would, was provided, but I would suspect, given that it's a duplex, that they would have been required to provide two parking stalls on-site for each unit for a total of four parking stalls.
And no, no suites are in that address, correct?
You would have to go back and confirm as to whether or not there are any illegal suites located in that project.
I'm just wondering why the big parking issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. councillor Reamer has a question.
Thank you. Another letter that we received asked that we worked with the developer to use the Heritage Inventory Document. Is that something that we are familiar with, and have we been using that, and will we be using it in this particular project?
Through your worship, the applicant hired heritage consultant by the name of Donald Luxton and Associates. Luxton and Associates prepared a conservation plan, which outlined a specific plan for how to retain and restore the existing heritage building on-site. Luxton and Associates is a very experienced firm within the Metro Vancouver region. They, as part of that, also did a significant amount of history on the building itself in terms of identifying the significance, and as a result of that plan, they identified a specific program for retention and restoration of that heritage building, which the developer will be using, it's incorporated into the Heritage Revitalization Agreement, informs part of the Heritage Revitalization Agreement.
Okay, are we familiar with the Heritage Inventory Document, and this will be similar, somewhat similar then, to that? I'm not familiar with the document, so.
The, I'm assuming you're referring to the inventory that was done by the consultants?
I'm not sure, it's just referenced in the letter from the Myardville Residents Association.
There is a, there is a Heritage Inventory that the city completed a couple, several years ago, I think it was recently updated by one of our community planning staff people. The inventory is simply that, it's just a list of potential buildings and sites within the city that have heritage value.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers? No other questions, rather? Are there any other speakers to this item? Get you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Darcy McNeil, nine-hundred Jarvis Street, Coquitlam. And is it, does it have to be a question, or can we make a statement?
You can say, no, you can say whatever you want, this is a public hearing.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, if it's related to the bylaw.
Yes.
And you can also say Go Canucks Go, if you want.
The Como Watershed Group became very interested in this development that was being proposed when we found a tree in the, in the corner of the lot to cut down, and personally felt really disturbed by it at first, and that feeling still sinks in my stomach quite a bit. In the southwest and in Coquitlam, besides Monday Park and Blue Mountain Park, especially in the Myardville neighborhood, there's very little trees that are still around, so the few that are are extra valuable, just to people living there. And our group was involved with talking to the neighborhood and feeling, seeing how they felt about it, and we were very relieved to hear that there were many people that were really concerned about that tree being cut down. Eventually, we began a dialogue with the developer, and we were very encouraged to learn that he was local, he's actually from the area, and we find this very, very interesting and encouraging. Also, the, the report that Donald Luxton and Associates did was really interesting, because they, they were supporting a four-pillar sustainability development strategy, which was incorporating the values of economic, social, but also cultural and environmental. As a result, I think that the developer was very willing and happy to talk with us about what might happen with that tree, and we'd just like to state that he's been very positive and open. He donated the remnants of this tree, so large, what we thought was a silver maple, but it may not be, it might be a white poplar, I believe. He donated the remnants of that tree to the Como Watershed Group to turn into an art piece. This group, however, has become very interested in developments in our watershed. There aren't many of these trees left, and it's usually the future developers that are going to determine how much of this green space is incorporated into our, our living area, and we will be, we'll be exploring ways that some of these trees can be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hope there are any other speakers to this item? Please step forward, Elizabeth.
Good evening, I'm Elizabeth Halderson, two-two-three.
If you could pull the microphone down, sorry.
Two-two-three Marmont Street.
There you go, thanks.
I've got a lot to say, but I'll try to be as vague as I can. We've lived in our house for, it's a hundred years old, our little house on Quadling and Marmont, which I love very dearly, and I have a great appreciation for heritage and old-time things, and I hold them very close to my heart, and I try to pass that on to my kids and my friends, and, and it's fastly passing away from us. And when I saw that tree chopped down at the corner there at Begin, I was really shocked, like, because that tree was so staturely, and so, it's such a beautiful piece, and, and I didn't think it would ever be cut down, and then that morning, it was gone. And I found who the developer was, and I phoned him, and he was very willing and very receptive and very friendly, and then I was relieved when I found he lived in our neighborhood, so I felt we had appreciation for Myardville. And, and then learning more about the development site, and then cutting the tree down to move the house over to reinstate that beautiful home that Maria had, made me feel very, very pleased. It was a really good trade-off, and then especially when he donated the tree to our group, to, as Darcy said, for a carving. But furthermore, and I'm, I really like the plan that he's done for the corner there, for the housing that he's planned out, I like that plan, and I also like the one that's behind Lavelle, like, the church, I really like that, it's, it's more in keeping than what's along Burnett. I don't like those blocks of townhouse, I think they're ghastly, and we don't want to see any more of that style. And I just want to say that I'm really, really happy about Macken Park, the Reed designing it, and the trees, and then leaving our beautiful willow trees and the trees along Burnett, it's a beautiful design, and it's an example to me how parks should be for Coquitlam. And the developers can follow suit. And now, my other little thing here I got in my mind is the property that's at the corner of right on Burnett there, that huge piece of property, those beautiful trees that are at the corner there, I really don't want to see those big trees cut down, like, they can work around them in some way, like, you know Dennis Howard, that little, that tree that was a, an really old, beautiful tree, and the city made the sidewalk go all the way around it, they saved that tree. So if the city can do that, developers can do that, too, and if they don't have enough room for parking in all their housing that they want to put in, well, then they just got to plan around it, and not be so dense with the housing. But those trees, I really want saved for, for Myardville, they're beautiful, along Burnett Street, they give peace and serenity and, and life to the community, and our nature and tree has, trees have to be preserved, and that's about all I got to say. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers on this item? Monsieur Lubert, s'il vous plaît.
Bonjour. I live at eight-twelve B Ingersoll, Coquitlam.
Monsieur Lubert.
And, yeah, myself also, I'm very interested in what happened on this specific property before, during, and after, and the implications it has for Coquitlam, overall in the long term and short term, how it approaches development. What I take into consideration is that you've got both, ever since the old city hall site issue of years ago, where there was an official community plan and it was locked into a neighborhood, we've had an evolution, some would say not necessarily an evolution, but anyway, we went to the citywide official community plan and had that incorporate with the official community plans of neighborhoods. And in terms of how decisions are made in Coquitlam now as far as development, I, too, would like to echo from the Como Watershed Group perspective, the importance of incorporating in design, nature as heritage, and I know this city at one point had done the Great Tree Hunt, right? And it kind of went a few steps, and somehow, I think is in a shelf somewheres, or maybe not, I'd like to know, Mr. Mayor, if there is an inventory of the trees in this city, much like a sister city across the way there, which has done some, some pretty interesting steps in not only identifying heritage trees, but situating them, GIS, right, you know, through the techniques that exist today, and then actually came up with a bylaw to actually protect specific heritage trees, not the idea of just cutting down trees, you know, like, I know we have a, we have a bylaw now where we're saying two trees, I believe, and I stand to be corrected on that, two trees can be cut on any private property, but I think, if nothing else, the fallen tree on that property, and it's a done deal, it was done, that might signal to us to wake up to the fact that our quality of life, the air we breathe, you know, all of the environmental issue, I believe, should be factored into development ideas and development concepts from this day forward, and I'm hoping that happens. There is some, I'd like to point out that Surrey specifically is a model city right now, considered across Canada, in the terms of how they approach trees, and I'd suggest that our city maybe looks into how Surrey has approached the whole idea of trees. Thank you. And by the way, this development in terms of the heritage issue is a very beautiful one, I'm echoing the other speakers here, it's very great to see that happen, I just wish that the incorporation of trees, and I also would like to echo that the Burnett Street, which has got a whole bunch of fences have come out recently, which is signaling something's going to happen there, that I'm hoping the city does incorporate there the very idea for the first time of how do trees fall into the issue of development, especially heritage trees, and there is a few of them on that property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, seeing no other speakers who want to speak to this item?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth, I won't go through that. I just have a really wonderful question to ask you, because where Plaç de Zartes is, you know, and the city hall was gone for the community, and that was written in stone for community use and planning, that the city maybe look at considering buying Trev's Cafe there, at the corner, you know, beside the property that was sold.
Elizabeth, I gotta, I gotta ask.
No, no, pardon?
Elizabeth, it has to be about the property we're talking about. I let, I relaxed a little bit on the trees on, in the Macken Park, but you can't.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, there's structured rules, we sort of have to deal with.
Oh, okay, I understand that.
Okay.
But that's important for the name Myardville.
But that's important for the name Millardville, because it's growing.
I know it is, and I'm sure that you'll write us a letter about it.
And there's going to be lots of families and kids.
No, I understand.
And we have no school.
I, I understand.
And we don't even have a school.
The, the rules are the rules. You, you can only be about the property we're talking about.
Oh, okay, maybe to protect the trees then on the protect, like, uh, he said, Roger said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other speakers to this item about the property in question? Any other speakers? Third and final time, any other speakers? And I thank those that came forward, uh, with that information. I declare this item closed.
Item three, bylaw number forty-two oh seven, twenty-eleven, for fourteen oh one, Austin Avenue.
This subject site is located on the north side of Austin Avenue between Schoolhouse and Gatensbury Streets. Zoning on the site into the northeast and south is RS one, one-family residential. Zoning to the west is P two, special institutional. The front portion of the site is currently being used as an overflow parking by the church located to the west. A house is located to the rear of the property. The applicant is requesting to designate the site as a temporary use permit area. This would allow the applicant to make a subsequent application, subject to council's approval, for a temporary use permit to facilitate development of overflow parking on the subject site. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number forty-two oh seven.
Thank you. No questions? Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item?
I haven't entered a place like this before.
No, no.
Okay, I'm a bit nervous here. Well, my name is Claude Breton.
Claude Breton, well.
I'm the resident of fourteen oh one, Austin. Oh, sixteen years ago, I fell in love with that old house there, and it took me a year and a half to restore it. Afterward, I got, was the first per couple be married at Hillside Chapel with my wife, and we moved into this old house, which is a hundred and twenty years old. And when I first touched it, all the window works still and the, the barn window, it's beautiful little house. And, uh, I know every square inch of this, this property right now. Oh, I heard about the development was supposed to occur here, and I got two separate worry here, safety concern. It's to do with two trees in the property. You know, heavy green trees have shallow roots and they're massive. If you tamper with them, last winter we had three times, seventy to eighty, I mean, eighty, ninety kilometer wind, and those three moved so bad, because my wife is scared to stay upstairs in the room. It's not safe, you know, we are speaking. But if you're tampering with those roots, and with this right now, you're going to put two parking facing the corner of the house. Uh, if you look at the pictures, there are two parking facing the corner of the house.
Do we have the parking map?
Uh, do you have something put on the?
Yeah, we'll just, we'll put it up right there. Nope.
Uh, yeah, I'm using this here right here.
Okay, it'll be up in just a moment.
Yeah, she's got a thing, big, yeah, that's. Uh-huh. All right. Well, this tree right here, in this corner, is high as ten feet tall.
You have to move to the mic, move back to the microphone, sorry. There you go.
It's a hundred and ten feet tall, and compared to the ground of the parking right now, where the tree stand, is a three and a half foot higher. Uh, now you're going to have to cut around those roots, those roots are very shallow. If that tree with a big wind comes down, it would put the house in jeopardy herself, or it could hit the neighbors next door in the front in Austin. That tree, it can go across Austin if it decide to fall in that territory. See, the, the, the tree is partly in the middle of the property. Or, you know, the property is only a hundred and ten foot long and the tree isn't back in the middle. You know what's going to happen to the remaining fifty foot? Or that's a double head of tree and the house will have no chance if it fall on mine or my neighbor. Or if you want to cut the root, you might as well remove the, I love trees, don't get me wrong, but this tree will be too much unstable. A barber, a barberist, we call it, who take care of trees, can confirm what I'm saying. Also, we have another tree there. When you're ready, I will point to you which one it is. The other tree is right there in the point, right there, uh, right there in that little point right here. This one is a hundred and twenty foot tall or long. It's three trees combined into it, and the only thing keep that tree up right now, we used to have a garage on the property. And that pad of concrete have a borderline around of one foot by six inches wide to restrain the plaque, the cement pad. All those roots of the tree are underneath that plaque, that, that cement. Or if you're trying to go and jackhammer the cement, there's nothing going on that tree. And this one is even worse than the other tree. That's the two tallest tree in the, in the property.
Okay.
And that's a very constant security for those two trees right now.
I need to ask a question.
Um, there's gonna, I, I, one of our staff persons, our, who has a comment or some information related to that, we'll just hold on for a second, and then Counselor Reed's going to have a question.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Um, just to clarify, the, the plan presented here is, um, something that the staff, at this point, it's, uh, preliminary. Before council today is simply the amendments of the zoning bylaw to establish a temporary use permit area. What staff would do is, we would, um, discuss with the applicant, uh, when they come in for a temporary use permit for the parking lot, and we'd do a detailed review of the actual areas that are being, uh, looked at for parking, uh, as well as the trees, uh, around those areas. And in fact, the temporary use permit that will come forward is for gravel parking lot at this time.
That's right.
It's temporary. They're not going to be doing any forming. Um, that would be something they might look at down the road. So we, we will take certainly the comments under advisement and, and ensure that, uh, the temporary use permit as it comes forward, we'll look at those trees, as per the, the speaker.
But what I'm saying, the first time I'm saying, if you cut around those roots, it will put that tree in jeopardy. If you remove the cement pad for that tree, there's nothing that's going on that tree. Now, I got another thing too. The way you have those two little parking down there facing the house, where do I get out of my driveway now? Do I going to have access to drive into those, that stall to get out? Or do I'm forced to get out through the back lane to go off the house?
I need to.
The point I'm making right now is, when I put my hood in my vehicle in the back lane, I got three both side, I don't see what's coming in or going. And the winter time, I can have twenty winter towers, I would never get out of there. It's ice. Because of that nest, the snow's melting in the tree, there's no I can get out. I've been trying for fourteen years, the only way to get out of the property when it's snowing is towards the front.
Okay.
And another subject here, I will bring over too. Uh, I'm representing three of my oldest neighbors living behind me. Lately, we've been having too much traffic in the back lane, and people are driving over forty excess kilometers. It's not, I'm not pointing the finger at the church people. I'm talking about the people are coming out from schoolhouse to avoid the light, they're taking the back lane as a shortcut, and start about five thirty in the morning, it can go up to nine o'clock and something at night, to take a shortcut the back lane to go into the exit, the, the church parking lot. It was asked once before by those people if the city could consider a sign and two-speed bump to slow down the traffic. We cannot stop the traffic, but people, if you ask anybody in that back lane, they're all going to tell you the same story. It's really dangerous now. We've got people with children, we have people with pets, you know, it's really dangerous. I think, uh, something should be looked for the traffic in the back lane there. It's really dangerous now.
No, I, I understand where you're coming from. I'm not sure it gets much worse with this, but I'm, I understand what you're pointing is on that one. The explanation is that those are important pieces of information, and I think staff would end up writing them down if, in fact, we change the temporary use to this site.
Yeah.
Staff have some work to do with the applicant to figure out where the parking spaces go.
Yeah.
And it might be fewer spaces, or it might be the, the point that you're taking. Yeah, understood.
What about the traffic in the back lane? Can we do something about it?
The traffic in the back lane really isn't, I don't know that it's particularly related to this. I don't know that this would.
It is, well, the church using it, plus everybody's coming down Austin, if you take the light in Austin, at schoolhouse in Austin, they're using the back lane.
No, I understand, but they're going, they're not using the back lane because we're changing the property to the.
No, 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 no.
Counselor Reed.
I, I need to clarify something, sir. Do you, you do not own this property anymore, correct?
I don't own the property. I, I rented it from the church.
You're renting it?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to know. Okay, and did they come and ask you about putting temporary parking in the front?
I, I've been in communication for over fourteen years with all my neighbors.
Yeah.
And they've been trying to ask the council to do it once, and it was declined. I don't know, many years ago.
Yeah.
But things changed now. Now we've got more traffic, plus people who don't own the neighborhood, they take from our schoolhouse.
Okay, so they did come and ask you anyhow?
Uh, I'm representing three of them, my neighbors, living right behind my place. And they say they paying so much tax like everybody else, I think there should, something should be done about the back lane.
Okay, well, I'm not here to.
To slow down everybody, the, the people who go to church, the foreigners, slow down. It's a danger zone now, it's incredible.
Okay, I'm discussing the parking lot, so can we go back to the front of the property?
Okay, uh, what should we do? Shall we have a, a paper, would everybody send a paper and bring it as a second subject?
No, no, I, I just want to ask you a couple of questions if you don't mind.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
So you're renting the, the house, and did the church come to you and tell you that they were going to apply for parking in the front of the property?
Well, they've been talking for a long time about it, yeah.
And you said that was okay?
Well, what choice do I have, ma'am? I mean, I don't own it. I'm, I'm the caretaker of the house, taking care, and I'm happy because the house is salvaged, because nobody is going to knock the house down, because it's a hundred and twenty years old, it's a part of Coquitlam history, you know?
Okay, thank you, that's all I need to know.
But, you know, for the parking, there's nothing I can do, it's definitely church.
Thank you very much, thank you. To staff, Mr. McIntyre, um, the drawing here is obviously not what's going to be. It's going to be all gravel, and you can look at a better parking configuration that can allow this gentleman in out of his house.
Um, yeah, I think as, as Raul mentioned a moment ago, uh, this is a concept for the, the proposed parking.
Yeah, well, the concept isn't going to work, so.
There seems to be a number of questions coming out of the public hearing tonight around, uh, existing tree cover, uh, access and parking to this house. Um, it's been a few years since I've been in there, but I, I understood that the driveway for the house at the back, it was off, it was right off the lane. I don't think it's from the area where the parking is proposed, but I think we'd have to have that conversation with the gentleman.
Okay, well, we may have to refer this back. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it. Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Another neighbor.
Good evening, your worship and counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Landgraf.
Ken Landgraf, fourteen hundred Austin, long-term resident since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, with all due respect to my neighbors across the street, both at, uh, the Hillside Church and the previous speaker in fourteen oh one, we get along fine up there, and it's a good, well-established neighborhood. I am, uh, speaking before you this evening to raise some concerns I have. To begin with, some short-term concerns, and then a longer-term, uh, concern which I, I will segue into. And if I may use the drawing on here, as we all know, Austin Avenue is a very, very busy street now, a major arterial route. And, uh, the approaches to the, uh, the current or existing approaches to the church, both have grades on it. The, the proposed, uh, intake or inlet into the church has a slight grade on it, and the exit from that church has, uh, a, a severe decline to that. In fact, it, in, in both cases, during the wintertime, those would both come, become very tricky, and even on a Sunday on Austin Avenue, it's quite busy. In the, uh, in the proposed changes to the parking lot, they, they show that as an inlet into the, uh, into the, not only the temporary parking lot, it also wraps around and goes into the, uh, to the, uh, current parking lot for the church. Now, as we are all creatures of habit, I would, uh, I would anticipate that, um, over a course of time, that this would become the major main entrance into the facility. Having said that, because we were going for a, a temporary permit with the use of gravel at the start, that because a tricky, uh, entrance into the facility, we don't always get to choose our speed to go into that sometimes. You have a split second to get off Austin Avenue, you run the risk of getting rear-ended, so dust control would be a concern to me, because it's going to be utilized so much more, so for the, and I, I'm to understand that, uh, it, it, it's proposed that in the near future, when they can afford it, that they'd be looking at some ash fault coverage for that parking lot. But if, if they could at all afford it in, in, for the short, or as soon as possible, if not in all the parking stalls, at least through the, the main thoroughfare, which would create the most dust, because once you get off that, you'd slow down to actually, actually park. And now my, um, my long-term concern, because this is a temporary permit of three years to be renewed, again, for a possible another three years, the, uh, the investment into creating this, um, it's, it's not going to be cheap. And so my concern is, because there is that heritage home at the back of that piece of property, what would be the commitment, um, to, uh, keeping that, that heritage home after you invested all this money into the, uh, into the parking lot? So I, I do, to appreciate the, that heritage home. I always have had a passion for heritage homes, and, uh, I'd be concerned that at some point, the fate of that home would be one that, uh, it could be decided that it'd be just simply removed. So those would be my concerns for you this evening.
Yeah, and I'm going to refer that last question to, to Mr. McIntyre, perhaps, uh, related to, Monsieur Breton lives in a house that he describes as, as a hundred and twenty years old. I don't know what information we have about it specifically, but, uh, Mr. McIntyre.
Uh, uh, thank you, worship. Uh, actually, I'm, I'm finding this interesting. I'm, I'm learning more tonight, uh, about that building than I knew before, because there was a time when I dropped off my kids there, and I was always wondering about that odd old house at the back of the property. So we, we will look into it. Um, I guess the more direct answer would be, uh, this is just for temporary use of the property. Um, the existing zoning remains, it seems apparent, the church is interested in keeping the house, they have a long-term tenant that's lived there. We could have that conversation confirm that. Um, if in time, there is, there'd be something more permit, like a permanent parking lot, certainly we want to look at things like the access points and the grades and, and that. And I think through that discussion at that time, we'd want to make sure that, um, for houses of that age and that character and that quality, that we'd like to look at, at opportunity to preserve it, as we do with a lot of the older buildings in that area of Coquitlam. So, um, I think we've made a number of notes here tonight that we can take back to the, to the property owner and, um, and have that discussion. So when, um, the temporary use permit for this specific property comes forward, we'd have some information in hand for, for council.
Okay.
So if I may, we are all good neighbors, I'm sure this can be worked out with consensus.
Thank you very much, Mr. Landgraf. Um, Mr. Asmussen, Counselor Asmussen. Sorry, Ken, Ken, we have a question for you.
Ken, can you come back? In your submission, you're talking about, I, I agree with you about the present egress and exit on there, it's fairly steep. So part of your solution, are you asking them to relook at their existing egress and entrance with this temporary use to make it a, a better operation on, uh, Austin coming in and out?
That's correct, because the, the limited amount of time you have to, uh, to enter it or even exit it, you only have moments, or else you, you're in a situation. So, uh, at least for the entrance way, for, uh, uh, our landing strip, if you will, for a short, uh, lack of term, a landing strip so that you can actually get off of Austin Avenue in a way that you wouldn't create a whole bunch of dust that would, uh, create problems for the neighbors. Because they are older homes, there's no air conditioning in most of those homes, so that rely on the, the windows being open during the summertime to keep our houses cold, cooler.
But I do think it's a good idea that even with the existing over here, that with this temporary use permit, they should look at a better situation here between the two. And you, you don't have to come around, you could maybe come across into the main area here and through. There's, there's different ways I think staff should work with the applicant to better create, fix some of the problems they have existing, because I drive them down that road a lot, and there is a lot of issues when you go past there, right? So I just want to clarify, that's one of the big concerns you have there.
So if I could suggest a landing strip right off of Austin Avenue, and then if, if, if money is the issue, do like we did in the Austin Works Yard through that gravel parking lot there, at least, uh, thoroughfare through it, and then you could do the third phase if, you know, when, when money's available to actually do the parking stalls in there. And then again, I would like a commitment to preserving that home.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I know there are representatives of the applicant, uh, in the audience, and I welcome if they wanted to come forward and make a commitment on behalf of the applicant, or at least address the concerns related to that. They don't have to, uh, and I know they may not, uh, have the authority to do, so that's fine. Um, and I do invite any other speakers. Are there any other speakers to this item? And I'd invite any other speakers, are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, or, Mr. McNeil, come forward.
Can I repeat my name again? Yeah?
No, you're good.
Okay. Uh, it's just a quick question. Um, the gentleman to back asked if he had an issue that wasn't directly pertaining to this item, how he would engage the city in voicing his concern. Uh, but he was asking about the alleyway and the speed of cars going back and forth in the alleyway, and it wasn't pertaining to this?
Okay, yeah. Well, we have a normal process, if, if an inquiry is made to any council member or to engineering work reception, uh, through the email or through telephone, we can, we can work on addressing that. We can't actually deal with it here, and it's, it's, it's simply one of the rules that it, it puts at risk the public hearing process.
I understand, I was just wondering, is there a specific place that someone such as myself might not know?
927-3500.
Thank you.
3501 is Mr. McIntyre's phone number. Sorry. 3401, sorry.
How's it go with your first choice?
Yes, yeah. And, yeah, Councilor Asmussen is the chair of the engineering standing committee as well, so he, and he drives more than anyone else in the lower main.
Question of process, which I don't know very much about, so.
No, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other speakers to this item? Second time, are there any other speakers to this item? Oh. Please come forward.
Your worship, councilors, my name is Robert Isaac Renton. I've assisted the church in this application with, with respect to design and graphics. And I can probably address some of the questions or concerns that were voiced by the earlier speakers. We also have Representative John Clark from the church. And if there's any questions related specifically to the church, he would be available to answer them. The first, the first speaker was concerned about the trees, and the, the church is very concerned about retaining the trees as well. There is one tree that has suffered some wind damage, and will have to be taken down. It's been assessed by an arborist, and that will be done in due course. It's this tree that's marked in red. And that's gonna be taken down for safety reasons. The church does wanna retain the trees, and we will certainly have an arborist involved through this entire process here. We, of course, will want to protect the roots, and it would be worth mentioning that the gravel finish allows rainwater to percolate down through, 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 to the roots. Asphalt, of course, would, is, you know, impermeable, and the water would, would be, would just run away. The second speaker was concerned about dust-free surface, and I just wanna say that, you know, a good quality gravel finish on there, that is, you know, washed by the rain from time to time, will be what we would call a dust-free surface. His concern also is about the house there, and because this is a temporary use permit application, the house would remain for the duration of the, of the, of the temporary use permit. I would like to mention also that the church has gone around to the neighborhood, and they've taken an information package. The front face of it, and I think you will have copies in your docket.
Yes, council has it back.
Okay, so this was taken around to get response from the neighbors. And the backside had that plan that you see there. I think the information in your docket adequately explains what, what our proposal is, and so there's no point in going over that again. Unless you have any specific questions. The, the church, as they went around through the neighborhood, they- They went to all of the addresses that are within 100 meters of the subject property. This was identified to us by, this was a, a map that was supplied to us by the planning department, and I'll lay this down here as well. Most of the, uh, most of the people that you can see there in that 100-meter radius responded favorably and gave support to this application. There was nobody who complained or was negative about it. And there were a few people that couldn't be contacted because they either didn't answer the door, or they weren't there. The church came back with 18 letters of support in that 100-meter radius there. And I believe you should have copies of, of those letters in your docket there. And they also came back with 28 letters of support from other residents of Coquitlam, but outside that 100-meter radius. Now, if there are any questions, I'd be prepared to answer them, or John Clark?
There is a question from Councilor Nicholson.
Which I think you've answered after I'd pushed my button. I was looking at all those forms, and it appeared to me that many of them were not from the neighborhood, and you've just said that some of them are. It does, though, appear to me from the wording that some people use in, in filling in the bottom of the form, that a good number of them are probably members of the church, is that accurate, or do you know?
Yes, that would be true.
Okay.
But these, but it was just residents of Coquitlam that responded.
Okay, so one said Port Coquitlam, but never mind. That's okay.
Anyway, so there are 28 residents of Coquitlam from outside that 100-meter radius.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? Seeing none, I thank you very much for the information you provided. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? The third and final time, any other speakers or submissions related to this item? Seeing none, I declare this item and the public hearing closed. We're gonna take a couple of minutes while staff reconvene some structures, we'll convene a council meeting in five minutes.
We have item four still?
Oops, I, my apologies. Then why did I adjourn?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Well, reconvene.
We're gonna back up, I'm gonna reconvene the public hearing. And item four.
Item four. Bylaw number 4208, 2011, is a text amendment to the M6 Retail Industrial Zone for 277 Schoolhouse Street.
Well, that's why, I didn't wanna deal with that one.
Good evening again. This subject site is located on the southeast corner of Schoolhouse Street and Booth Avenue. The site is owned M6 Retail Industrial and is located within the Schoolhouse Street M6 area as designated in the city zoning bylaw. Zoning to the south is M1 General Industrial, to the west, P1 Civic Institutional, to the north, RM3 Multi-story Medium Density Apartment Residential. The site currently has a number of uses, including manufacturing, fabricating, automotive repair, contractor office wholesaling, warehousing, and educational training services. The proposed bylaw text amendment would permit professional office use, specific only to the site here at 227 Schoolhouse Street. Staff are recommending all final readings to bylaw number 4208.
Okay, I have one question, and that is, um, the addresses on Schoolhouse, the specific permission, the permitted use of office would apply to the site or to the building?
Would, your worship, uh, yes, that would only apply to the site, 227 Schoolhouse Street?
277 Schoolhouse.
So it could apply to all the buildings at 227 Schoolhouse Street?
277, is it two, right? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. I don't see a speakers list on this one either, no. Are there any speakers to this item? Second time, are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, any speakers to this item, seeing none? I was right the first time. I declare this item closed.
That would be all of the items on the public hearing adjourned.
And therefore, I declare the, uh, public hearing closed. Uh, there's a motion to adjourn if we like, but I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we'll convene the council meeting in a moment.